Okay, I'm gonna call the labor workshop for the city of Vernon. Law was thirty twenty twenty-two to order. Chad, in rotation please.
Greetings, every father. We thank you for this day. We ask you Lord that you bless this town and continue to bless us as you have. Father, we just ask you that you just put your hand upon us now that we will make the correct decisions for the city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, you wanna start with what's in front of us?
No ma'am. Um, this turned out to be quite a nightmare as you can see. Um, I did the best I could. Lee helped me the best that he could. A lot of things were not coded correctly in the system, so, um... I cannot tell you with one hundred percent certainty that this is accurate because I didn't realize how bad it was until yesterday when I started getting into it. The income part of it, I did put off to the side. Um, I'm not sure what the special assessment was, but there was seven hundred dollars budgeted last year for it. But I don't know what that is.
Special expense?
Yes, it's on your income page, the first page. You'll see out to the side, question mark was found in banning.
Oh, I see it.
I'm not sure what that is.
I don't know what that is either.
Also, under the rec, insurance proceeds was counted for this year because they were flooded. However, that's not everything. That bothers nothing in there for next year.
You talking about under the insurance proceeds?
Right, the one that was for, I guess, the office was flooded. That was the money that they got for that.
That money's been... That money's no more.
Right. Down in DOT, we did not renew the agreement for the mowing, so the only income we'll have from them next year will be the lighting.
So is that sixty next sixty two forty?
Yes, that includes the mowing and the lighting. And as you can see, we actually made fifteen thousand sixty-six seventy-five off of it. Or is that may go up? I don't know. I don't know if that will get more than the eighty-nine next year or not.
With the lighting, it's more than the...
But in the mowing?
At the top, she had budgeted for the general government fund, ninety-nine thousand five hundred eighty-one. Actually took in nine hundred and seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
So we off, we're off on that?
Yeah, we took in, we did not take in as much as she...
Budgeted for.
Budgeted for. And if you'll go down this, you'll see a lot of those like that. But then there's also others that she budgeted, but we actually took in more. And again, Lee and I found where there's a lot of before Tracy left and while Michelle was in there doing the... There were a lot of things were coded wrong. It would've taken us forever to go in there and read codes. So I did the best I could the last two days trying to figure exactly where they went. That's why I said this is between me and Lee, this was the best I could do.
So what you said on that is what she was paying out, she was paying out of one fund instead of specific...
Like when Michelle was paying bills, we, like with their light bills or, you know, cellphone bills and everything. Each department has their own fund for the electricity and for the phones and everything else. When Michelle went there and paid the entire bill out of one fund. Which I didn't know that until I started doing this. And then I actually had to pull those bills and sit down and calculate. And I said, "I did the best I could guys."
So you had to do each individual and put them in the correct...
Exactly. And since they had already been reconciled, I couldn't change them in the computer, which made it that much harder. So I had to do all of this by hand. That's why I said, our last two days, I have, with Lee's help of course, worked.
Now explain to me what this thirty-three one six zero is, where it says another general government fund is at?
Where are we at? Thirty-three three one six zero?
Yes.
That two thousand budgeted and we took in? I would actually have to go through that.
Which one you said Chad?
Thirty-three one six zero? It's right up on the notary.
Okay, I see that. What do you mean you have the general government?
Karen, did you say you didn't know what that was?
No way.
But I don't remember seeing that last year. That we had last year, so that's the reason I was asking.
Thirty-three one six zero?
Yeah, I can go in there and I can click it and it, I think it will give me a breakdown. It does on the expenditures. I haven't checked for the income, the revenue part of it. You would basically have to go in there and look at that program to see the struggle that we have had.
This year's local home license?
Yes, we get a lot of that. We get all those from like the county and stuff.
Okay. I just don't remember seeing that on the last one.
By the mobile home? They have to get it licensed. But do they do that every year?
From the county?
We've always got that.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, I'm sure we have. I just...
No, but I'm saying, do they do that every year?
Yes.
I couldn't remember what one of them did every year.
Okay, I don't remember seeing it because a lot of it was a line item.
Yeah, they were just...
And that was another issue with the, with doing it and banning its line item on her part of it. It's not, so trying to plug it where it needs to go. From parks and rec, like I said, over to the side, they actually took in more than the forty thousand. So, but... That includes the insurance, so you take that out and you're right back down.
So this year, we won't have to add the gate fees, great teaming, because of our charging for the ball games, right? Get it to the football games?
We've always charged. They just pretty much broke even because they paid the referees out. Now, we made some money this time, but I wouldn't anticipate it.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, I didn't realize it until I got into the rec. They have their own sheet. And it's got like gate fees, it's got franchise fees and empire fees because of the way y'all turn in your money. I didn't realize on that log of paperwork y'all turn in that they're, that y'all include empire fees. So I can't account for, I know there's some there, but I can't account for none of it without going back through every piece of paper you turned in. So we're thinking about maybe coming up with a form that would make it easier for y'all and for us when you turn them in. So I can line item correctly.
We had one for baseball.
They did?
I think we did. And we tried to break out those empire fees.
Cause I pulled one out of, I forget what month it was, I just, I said, "Is it on there?" And sure enough, I happened to, after looking through all the scribbling, I found it. And there was a couple people have been paid out of it. And I'm not sure what franchise fees are.
Our leagues.
For your league?
Baseball, we have to pay Dixie U in both softball and baseball. And then like just now, we just have to pay our PYFA. And those are pretty common. I can tell you what those are. Those don't change from year to year.
Yeah, I said you had two hundred dollars for last year.
Crossed all our sports?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. How much do you...
Well, we didn't make football last year technically, so it covered it. We definitely covered it though.
So two hundred?
But with football, we're at seventy-five dollars a team, so we're at three hundred dollars this year, just in football.
I kinda need to know that for the, so you're looking at three hundred for football and then two hundred?
I'd have to do the math on the baseball teams because we'd have to do an average of what our teams were this year. Actually, we just do what, how many teams we had this year? And then it's like eight dollars at this level, ten dollars at this level, twelve dollars at this level.
So that two hundred dollars on the franchise fees will come in?
Cause a lot of teams, they're putting up ten teams over there.
And if you'll notice, under the recreation, there's a five hundred and seventy-five dollars there by itself. I don't know what that is either. On the recreation department paper, by itself, under where the expenses are, there's five hundred and seventy-five dollars. But I'm not sure what that's for. There's nothing beside it.
Is that very tall?
Yes, right there that. Not sure.
Do you by chance know what that is?
Nothing, it's blank.
Yeah, it's blank. There's nothing, not. It's just five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Expense?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know what, does that ring a fumble? Um, you'll notice that the water sewer income is not completed on this income sheet. I was working on water sewer when I realized it was almost five thirty. So I did not get it completed because it, I'm gonna need to clean it up before I'm gonna actually do it. But the last few pages I gave you show the revenues for the water sewer. On page one is the revenue and then you'll see the, there's three pages for the expenses. But I can tell you now, probably the wages and salary section is not gonna be correct. There's, I've got to get up with Garrett. There seems to be an error with the payroll on all the accounts. So I had to redo them all. And looking at the revenue on the water sewer, I don't know if there's a massive error somewhere in that program or what is wrong. But if you'll notice, the twenty-one, twenty-two year date budget, and then compare it to year to date, what we've taken in, there's a humongous difference. So I'm saying it could just be something wasn't coded right.
How confident are you that it's correct?
Honestly, not very. Cause I'm looking at this water sewer and this revenue just does not seem correct. I mean, when you look at last year, she had budgeted over five hundred thousand dollars for revenue for the water sewer department. And this year's only showing five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. There's, to me that, and we're at the end of the year. Something ain't right. So that's what I'm saying. I don't know if, if in that banning program, if something wasn't coded. Cause I'm telling you, if it's not coded correctly, you're not, you're going into with some really not so good numbers. I'm confident on the tap-in fees because we have taken in a lot of taps. We did several taps this year, but...
Do you by chance have copies of last year's budget?
I do.
I think that will help all of us out.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to compare. Try to get it straight.
That's why I included it on the last year's budget amount on it.
Yeah, but I think what they're saying is, I know for me...
We need a kind of a line by line.
We need, yeah, to set aside, like, I'm not seeing, there's nothing here. It's a hundred something dollars for the fourth.
Where's that at?
That's a donation though.
That's the, the fourth extravaganza? But there's nothing that was on here about fireworks.
It's under, no, it's under that, the big amount.
It's under that big amount on the other page.
Yeah, it doesn't say fireworks.
It doesn't say fireworks. It just says fourth July.
Okay, and that?
And that's on the rec.
That was on...
On the recreation sheet.
Down there at where it says sixteen-five for the fourth July was budgeted, we actually spent seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
And they stopped eighteen next year for the twenty-three.
I just threw a number in.
I'm waiting on...
See what the price will be.
Price of the fireworks.
You sealed it though?
No ma'am, I'm not sure. They are working it up, so I should have that very sure. But we have been told that it's gonna go up a little bit each year just to tell us the way things are going. So...
Well, I just threw a number in there.
I just hope it comes. You know, cause I wasn't sure what to put. I think what, and what? I think everybody was saying Karen, I appreciate the way you've done this.
So I'm sorry I didn't get workers to look at it.
And understand, but also if we have that actual copy of last year's...
Oh yeah.
That we can set it outside, I think it'd help all of us work, work the numbers a little bit better. See what's going on.
But see what happened here and where...
Yeah.
It's short and the, where we're short is what, in the open. But we can also see how close what we budgeted for this year and how close we came to it. If it's fall back or if it's over.
Yeah, and that's what Karen was saying, her and Lee are still, they're still having to work out a few keys with just the problems that they ran into. So there's some of it, I mean, payroll, we don't know, water and sewer, there's some questions on that.
Now payroll, everything on here, I'm pretty confident about the numbers for expenditures and income. It's the water sewer itself by itself that I'm not confident about, looking at these numbers.
It's just water sewer?
Yeah, I cannot see budgeting a hundred and twelve thousand and only getting to thirty-five.
Oh, my goodness.
That's a big difference.
No, I know.
That's why I'm saying, and...
You've got many issues.
Somewhere.
Well, and it could just be with the way it's wayed in that year. It could just be the way it's coded. That's what we've been running into. Things are not, were not coded correctly. And that will throw everything off.
Well, and I remember at budget time last year, and I wasn't the only one, there were several comments made about the way this was lined out. Some of it, we could not understand where, there was a lot of questions as to what was, what lied out, where the money was at. We didn't understand a lot of it. Just by the way they laid out. But I've heard now, from last year, they thought that everything was banned.
Did you want me to also see if I can find out what the, like, other general government is? To see if that will break it down?
Yeah, we're gonna have to know.
These are categories that were already in there. I just plug in the numbers.
I don't understand what the general government is.
In other miscellaneous?
I know the miscellaneous.
Yeah, I'll check that. And I don't know what the special assessment is.
Special funding. What is it?
She allotted seven hundred dollars for income, but I don't know what, nothing in hence that sits there. I'm not sure. Did you find out what the, um... Insurance, excuse me, don't insurance, the notary was about what was coming out of the fire department?
Yes, I did. It is for the, for note, for the person who's a notary here that is a bond on them. Why it's coming out of the fire department fund, I don't know. I will put it in the correct code. That's what it's for. Um, right now, the last person that was being covered by that policy, cause it just renewed on RAC, was Diane Hendricks.
I think it's a while.
But it came out, that payment just came out.
They, it automatically renewed, it, I mean, it started with the, uh, the burn, Moplin? Yeah, and then...
But you, yeah, what I'm saying is you just told me that you found it's being paid twice a year.
Well, yeah, it's coming out of the fire department fund. That's what proved me because I'm like, why is the fire department paying a bond? And she said, she contacted the company, cause I contacted our agent, Bonifay, and they, she sent me the paperwork. Like I said, Diane Hendricks was the last part. That's how long it's been since it was renewed, is the paperwork part of it.
And so we're still paying it?
We're still paying for it.
Twelfth year, and also there was seven, was it seven hundred dollars that was budgeted? Did you tell me? And it's only a hundred dollars? Or seventy dollars a year, something like that?
Um, no, she had, yeah, I know, I got a question mark by Eddie, still up on the fire department. She, she had budgeted six thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cent for insurance. But the only thing that came out was that two hundred dollars.
Why is it just...
That's why there's question marks off to the side because I don't...
Why is it so much?
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Budgeted, I would've thought that it was separate insurance that the protocol was having to carry.
They should be under your...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I... It's under ours.
But when she brought it to my head the other day, she had not contacted anybody yet to find out what it was. But there was two budgets coming out, was it March and October or May and October?
Or some, yeah, I got them in there, but...
But there was over six thousand dollars budgeted.
Yeah, almost seven thousand dollars budgeted for that.
I see that, but why? If it's only two hundred?
I don't know.
But just to clarify, anybody in the office that handles money needs to be bonded.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know that.
And that should come out of...
Do you think that's it? That's probably the market?
It probably is. It shouldn't be that expensive.
But that's what I'm saying, that's still high for being bonded.
Yeah, that's...
So Karen, you're probably gonna reach out to them?
Yes.
See who is bonded. Is that for the office staff? Cause I know they have to be bonded.
Yeah, it is. It's for the office staff. It's for one person in the office.
Yes. But what she's saying is, we've been paying that money, but it's been...
Coming out of the fire department.
It's been out of the fire department budget and also it hasn't been updated since Diane was here. Since Diane was here. So update that and find out what it'll be. And Michelle, you did say both positions are supposed to be bonded. I know it used to be that way.
I mean, your clerk absolutely should be bonded, but anybody that handles money ideally should be bonded.
I thought we saw both staffs in there with bond.
They were when I was in the... I needed to put both of those on there. And it needs to be coming out of administrative, state, and fire department. And I still don't understand what seventy thousand dollars would be. And I don't either.
Well, it might be a mistake. I don't know. That was put in the wrong.
Obviously it slipped in the wrong.
And also on the fire department, transfer of funds, fire station eighty-four fifty, I don't know what that is. That was the budget. Nothing was used for that. I'm, like I said, I'm not sure. And the stipend at the bottom, I'm not sure what that is either.
The stipend is what they get from the county. I get what is in ten dollars. I didn't think it was that much. Is that the stipend, the money they get from the county? Well, I didn't think it was that much money. I didn't think it was ten dollars.
But that seventy-seven hundred was not for this year. That was last year. I just changed that because it wasn't nothing.
That seems more like it, that seven thousand, cause I, I don't think they get that. They don't get them ten dollars. It's somewhere back below ten dollars, and I think, I'm sure it is.
Karen, me, you were just talking about that the other day. It was been a couple of months ago, remember? Do you remember what that was that the county? I know a lot of what had been under breached these years.
Their quarterly payment?
Yeah.
It's at the top of the... She had budgeted forty-four thousand and we actually got in thirty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-one point. From, from them.
From the county?
Yes, from the county.
Cause I try to talk about that, do that person.
Utilities on all of the, for all of the different ones, may not be accurate because like I said, some were paid. I tried to, and I may have missed them in the same way with the telephone. Expenses. I tried to catch them all, but I may have missed some, so... But the rest of it, I just went line by line through the program with each one and like, like I said, water sewer, it's probably gonna take me all day tomorrow to try to figure that one out.
I know, cause that's a tough one all the way.
It is. It, it is. Lee and I are confident though that next year at budget time, we won't have this problem.
I hope not.
Well, since he, he hasn't been in it the whole time.
Right.
If he had been in it the whole time, I'm sure we would have it now.
Yeah, he, he just, he did, well, it's a new program to him, we've both been having to learn it, and we've had to call the company, and on one issue, they couldn't help us. So we just had to kind of win it. But overall though, we're, we're getting there with it.
Got it, yeah. Now, when we approved, um, for the wreck department to get, uh. The lawnmower and the gator, I don't see that.
For the wreck department?
Uh-huh.
Wouldn't it kind of, they would have.
They never approved the gator, did they?
Yes.
Yeah.
We approved both of them.
Yeah, I was gonna mention too, on the wreck, speaking of the wreck department, it had signs slash scoreboard, it was the budget of sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-three thousand. Going for three dollars and thirty-five cents.
That was never got.
That was never.
See that there? It was budgeted for it, but we never got it.
Right.
So that money should still be there?
Hmm. I don't know about that thing. Oh, I don't know.
Okay, where was the money, where was the money for the gator in?
I know that we, we got the lawnmower, but remember, um, Joey was supposed to be getting this process on lawnmowers and the gator in for the wreck department. And not only there, but with the, with some other ones with the city.
So that was gonna come out of wreck? I know about the lawnmower, but the gator's slipping around, but that's, that was just supposed to come out of wreck, though.
I think it was two lawnmowers, one for fire, one for us, and then a gator for city and gator for us, or something like that, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, because we were gonna do the, the two gators together, because Jason and him was gonna take one and start using it to do meter reads. And the wreck would have the other one for the. Garbage and stuff. Okay, well.
But that sixteen thousand is there, we don't know where it is, and it's not, what's the use or nothing, okay? They don't have, that was for all. An electric scoreboard, was it?
Couple of years ago?
Yes.
Yeah, we had two, two or four, here, remember, scoreboards approved.
That's why I definitely paid for one of them.
What's that?
That one was paid for one.
They're about, they're about twenty.
They're about twenty thousand dollars a piece.
Well, ours wasn't. It, it's a smaller, so it's a base multiple one.
Okay.
But you got the scoreboards, you watch about the sticks, bro? No, you're not got it.
That was before I.
Okay, so this is money that's been floating around for more than a year and that's what? More than three years in fact, what?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we, it, it was at least two scoreboards, I'm pretty sure it was two scoreboards, 'cause we were gonna do two at the sports bikes at a time. And that's probably been three years ago plus.
So that money's not floating anymore, can you check into that?
No, 'cause we looked, we, we asked about, I asked about it after the change ever happened, and they were like, well, that was budgeted, that was last year's budget. You don't have it in this year's budget.
Well, you didn't get it.
What you don't spend.
You didn't spend it.
Check on those scoreboards, see how much they're gonna be in, make sure you don't ruin that.
Yeah, he's still following my email, so I can easily reply back to him, so.
Let us know something about it next week. Do you hear me, Tim? Did you hear what I said?
I did.
Look. Let us know something about it next week.
And somebody needs to follow up on the price for the.
The lawnmowers and Joey.
Lawnmowers and the gators. I don't know who Joey was dealing with.
I, he didn't say, he just said he didn't want to give you information.
Jason, do you have any idea who Joey might have been looking to for the lawnmowers and the gators? And there's no, this is what we spent last year, and this is what money we're dealing with this year, so.
I know I was thinking a while ago, but where's the one, where we, what we spent so far this year versus?
You won't, you're talking about the summary? Yeah, I don't have that, sorry. The only thing I can, on that is, is on each paper, it has what the budget wa, well, no, that just tells you what the budget was, I won't tell you what we spent last year.
Well, it said actually we spent. And the base, so they, they tell you what you spent. Actually, remember you, and how you spent.
But I can get, once I can get the water sewer done, I'll be able to do the, the, the summary part of it, and I can, uh, get it to y'all. Have one of the guys running around there with the copy of last year's own. Budget also, 'cause that way y'all have it.
Didn't Lee tell you when he was coming back?
Uh, no, he didn't.
Well, now I don't have to ask, I'm going to get out with him and see when y'all can get back together to get the rest in, we have a, we have another workshop meeting with our regular workshop on the 3rd.
Right.
What you said, when you're gonna do this, do you?
Yes, I'm saying, on that, we have a second.
Yeah.
Budget workshop in with our regular workshop, we said.
That's a plea.
Yeah.
Tuesdays.
Okay.
Tuesdays.
Yeah, we have Monday, it's a fifth of Labor Day. Yeah. Karen, I, I understand what you've been going through the last two weeks trying to get all this done, I appreciate it. There's more information in front of us than I honestly thought was gonna be thoughtful, after what you told me was going on last week, but.
Oh.
Thank you.
Also, on another note, um, I don't have exact numbers, 'cause he wasn't able to get that far into it of what we have. Uh, cash wise, so to speak. Um. He is confident that, 'cause I have all those outstanding bills that have not been paid, 'cause we weren't sure money wise, if there is enough. That we, I can go ahead and, which I know I have to wait till the regular meeting to vote on it, but we will have enough to pay those bills. And we're, we're gonna need to, we've got three hundred and forty, over three hundred and forty thousand in ARPA funds that we need to. See if, you know, are we gonna go back and try to? 'Cause what I ended up doing was I paid, went ahead and put, took the money from ARPA and put it in a fire, back into the fire department fund. For that radios and the, um, payers.
That we had approved out of that fund, yeah.
Right, so I went ahead and turned, gave it back to them.
And the rest of it is in an interest-bearing account?
Right, it's in its own fund.
And we have. We need to have that. Lost, and lost revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that, it, um, capital.
Yeah. And I'm assuming that, that's been sent to who? Who needs to know it, right? That was sent back to?
That'll be on your, the next report that you.
Okay.
Submit that when you declare it, that, um. That Lee and the officers are wanting to know.
Yeah, I, he, I, when I told him what we had decided, he, he said that was the best.
But we, we already approved that, so that money was then going to the general fund and biggest first that way, and kept up with. What, isn't that, Michelle, am I correct on that?
Yeah, we, we still have to spend it on eligible.
Yeah.
Projects that be, um, the accounting is not as detailed.
Yeah.
So right, right now, it's all we have, a lot of forebuds to, to things for the fire department.
That's all that I know that y'all actually voted on.
Yes.
We've been discussing.
We discussed about a lot of things, but that's all that we voted on, to my knowledge. So I guess we're gonna have to wait for the rest of the numbers. Won't you really do anything?
I really didn't think I was gonna have this, like you were saying, I didn't really think I'd be able to do this, like I said, late coming yesterday and.
Excuse me. Well, if you can get the previous budget and get. Between you and Lee, get the rest of the numbers to us.
Oh, they'll definitely be here this week. They're only two today.
Then we should be able to deal with it better at our next workshop. Give y'all a chance to look over it all and. You're getting away, yeah, I mean, I.
Things on this rent money's gonna have to be put into budget too, for when we get them. We're trying to find that out, I shouldn't know about it, getting four next week.
But you can't put what you don't have.
That's why I didn't say it.
Oh. You gotta make sure we can't put it in there if we don't have it.
Well, it's gonna be specific.
Right.
Right.
Specific, people.
Last quote I got was three apiece, and that includes the controllers and everything. Three thousand apiece.
Three thousand.
For what?
This quarter.
Go on.
Now. With everything going on and chips issue, and then it, it may be different now, it's been a little bit since he sent me that too, so, that I can get a, I can get a refresh. If y'all want to.
Yeah, get us a product. Also, and I haven't seen it in here, but I do know that. Um, our animal control also. This is very greasy, with this little budget.
Daphne?
And he would appreciate a little up. A raise in his. In his little budget, because there's something that he has pulled inside that would help him tremendously. And he'll talk, y'all got that in another meeting, but while we're talking about our budget, I just thought I'd throw that out there, 'cause I spoke to him earlier today, and he, um. Mentioned that he wanted to ask council if he could have a little bit more. It is not, not, I, I didn't even say.
It's on the street department?
It's, it's near the bottom, it's under a. The cemetery button, let's get those for him. Okay, yeah, it is. Well, his, his budget last year was twenty-five hundred. Looks today, he's spent seven hundred and fourteen.
Right.
Y'all know most of that's been hauling. And kept it down to a minimum.
He did.
I think he's had some issues with some cats.
Yeah.
Um, he mentioned some damaged cages just from traveling and, you know, stuff like that, so I, I know that he would appreciate it. There's something else, and Jason, you may know what it is. You know what he's talking about, about the, he told me what it was, and y'all are like. I'm, I'm an animal owner, non-animal control person, that's right, but there's some, something. He can explain it to y'all too, but there's something that he could use that would make things a lot easier and safer on him. I, for the life of me, I can't tell you what it is, but he will. So does anybody have anything they wanna add or discuss about this, or are we all pretty much just gonna wait on the paperwork then?
It helps me when I get, if we get the other paperwork, it helps everybody.
Well, and when they are able to get the final numbers, I know I'm about to be able to see that.
Compared apples now.
That total amount of one point four, one point whatever. And, and definitely warrants the result.
Oh, yes.
So. All right, well, nobody have anything else on that? Karen, I appreciate what you and Lee have been able to do.
We do, appreciate you.
And I know it's crunch time and you feel pressured.
Yep.
A lot, yes.
Yeah, well.
I'm not gonna tell you to take your time, because we can't, but know that we appreciate you.
Well, I appreciate that, I do.
You, but.
Just know that next year, we're not gonna have this.
That's fine by me. So if you, if nobody else has anything, can I have a message to adjourn?
We can motion adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.